Meeting, August 26th, study meeting of Livonia City Council. Would everybody please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance led by the Honorable Laura Toye?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilwoman Toye.
Thank you.
All right, so this meeting sets the agenda for the year 2000 regular meeting. I think we have to just start dressing appropriate for these. It's kind of running up there. A voting meeting that will take place on Monday, September 9th, where tonight's items will be officially voted on. I'm not showing all of council here. I'm going to jump right into audience communication. The council has set aside 30 minutes for items that are not on the agenda. If you'd like to speak on items not on the agenda, please make your way to the podium and name an address, and you have three minutes. Is your matter on the agenda? Oh, you can make your way up right now. You're good, because we're going to jump right into it. Anybody else have any other councils? Oh, Mr. King.
Communications communication?
Yeah, just general?
Yeah.
Yep, pop up.
All right, I'm sorry.
Ma'am, we'll have that right after council has communications, we go to item one.
All right, hey, how you doing? Just a couple of things. I wanted, I was watching at home again, and I just wanted to thank the citizen who gave me a shout out. I was the one that came up and was questioning, and was questioning the building materials, so...
Did you leave the car running?
Yeah, 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 yeah. And the other thing is, just a couple of things. Laura, you mentioned about Southern Farmington and the, how derelict that property became. And I, everybody's in complete agreements. I think you can go out throughout the city and you can find other, other sites that are the same way, but I would ask that the city lead by example. I'm going to start sending you guys pictures. I was walking the dog through the neighborhood today, and litter, everywhere I looked, every, every drain that's supposed to drain rainwater covered, filled. If you walk through any of the city properties, crabgrass so big, I'm going to call Guinness, because I've never seen crabgrass plants that big. So, the city has to do its part, and everything that they have has to be maintained and pristine before they start reaching out to business owners and asking them to do the same. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. King.
Mr. President?
Uh, Councilwoman Toye?
If we're going to do a council announcements even, I wanted to share with everyone, Mr. Joyner and others, what's his name, Jim, have worked tirelessly on this Bentley historical marker dedication, which, for those of you that went to Bentley or didn't go to Bentley High School, that is now the Jack E. Kurtsey Livonia Community Rec Center, is on Sunday, September 15th of this year at 2:00 PM. And many, many Bentleyites are coming. I think Schoolcraft College is supplying the food. That alone should make you come, because they do wonderful things out there. And lot, Mr. King's involved in this, because Mr. King's a bulldog, and Superintendent Schools' Mayor, and many others. So, if you're not doing anything that Sunday on the 15th, or spread the word out to your fellow bulldogs, that they're going to do the dedication of the marker for Bentley High School, one of the, was the oldest high school in Livonia. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything further from council? Councilman Donovan?
Mr. President, Councilwoman Toye won't, won't really go into detail, but she's been working very hard on the bulldog and the donations, and she's, I think she's called just about everybody in Livonia, trying to help out the cause. So, she won't take credit for it, but I think it's going to be a really successful event, because she's talked to everybody. I think she even called my father, asking for help. So, she's asking everybody for the help, and she really cares about the Bentley bulldogs. Although Churchill's better, but it's okay.
It's okay. Thank you.
Anything else from council? Seeing none. I did want to just touch base and give the kudos. This past Saturday, there was over 10,000 people that made their way through Greenmead for the Touch a Truck event. And it was an all hands on deck, weather looked good, a lot of happy kids, thousands of Hot Wheels cars handed out, and smiles on everybody. So, everybody that was a part of that, thank you. We look forward to it hitting 15,000 next year. So, that's all I have there. And with that, we are going to jump right into the study agenda. We do show new data on item number five. And I'm going to jump right into item number one, which is a block party request that comes to us from Marynolph, from, to be held on Saturday, September 14th, 2024, from noon to 8:00 PM on Perth Street. Good evening.
Hi, actually, I'm Barb Ferrera. I'm standing in for Marynolph.
That's fine, you're here.
Okay, yes, we're having a block party. We're shutting the street down, partially though, we don't need the whole street, so we're just doing partially, keeping all the neighbors together closer, so they have to mingle.
There you go. Have you done this before?
We have, yes.
Awesome.
This is our third one.
All right, we have, it's like a standing tradition, we always kind of get anniversaries, so we want to see you here for many more years to come up, and appreciate it. Council, do we have any direction? Councilman Morgan?
Yep, I'll offer an approving on consent.
You have an approving on consent, which, if you want to come hang out with us on September 9th, you can, but you really don't have to.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Is there any audience communication on this incredible block party? Seeing none? Have a good night.
Thank you.
Thank you. We're going to move on to item number two, which is request to waive the city's noise ordinance. This comes to us from Richard Warner, to host a family gathering with a DJ at the property located at 33901 Hathaway Street, to be held on Saturday, September 14th. Oh, that's going to be conflict, we've, we've got another party on that day, from 4:00 to 10:00 PM. Good evening, sir, how are you?
Good evening. Um, yeah, my name is Rick Warner. I just wanted to fill you all in, I'm a school bus driver here in Livonia, and got a chance to welcome a lot of our new kindergartners this morning, which is a big thrill every year. Anyway, regarding the party, it's a family gathering, and quite a few of my immediate neighbors as well. And we're going to have DJ and live music, and asking for the noise ordinance, I believe, till 10 o'clock.
Yeah, for sure. And listen, my mom, Wendy McCullough, works as a bus driver as well, and if you have to put up with her, then I take your word for this party.
She may be there.
Please have her there, she needs a bit more. Counsel, do I have direction?
Approving, oh, go ahead, sorry. No, no, go ahead, go ahead, please.
Approving.
For consent?
For consent.
You have an approving for consent, have a blast.
Thank you much.
Anything from the audience on this noise ordinance? Seeing none? All right, moving on to item number three, which is a request to waive the city's noise ordinance. This comes to us from Matt Parnell, Old Rosedale Gardens Homeowners Association, to host a family-friendly movie night on Friday, September 20th, 2024, from 8:00 PM to 10:00 PM. Good evening, how are you?
Good, thank you. So, you basically said it, I mean, yeah, we're looking for a family-friendly movie in Kleiner Park, and that's basically the bottom line.
What kind of movie, what are we doing?
So, I think what we kind of picked were between Cheaper by the Dozen or Napoleon Dynamite. Two classics, right?
That's a tough one.
Yeah, I'm not sure yet.
I'm leaning at Napoleon, but I don't want to... That's your decision? Counsel?
Oh.
Jim, you want this? In your Napoleon?
I think Karen called it.
Councilwoman Bazinski, you have to speak like Napoleon, though.
I won't do that. But I'd like to put it on the consent agenda approving, if there's no objection from my colleagues.
Councilwoman Toye?
I just want to, I just want to commend you guys down there, because you've been doing these movie nights here and there for a long time, and, and you do so many nice community things with the groups down there. Thank you for doing all that.
I'll thank you on their behalf. I just got involved, but I'm looking forward to many years probably of, of, you know, working and helping with these events, so...
Yeah, yeah, it really, it really helps, you know, build community down there.
Absolutely.
That's awesome, thanks.
Well, you have an approving on consent. If you, like I said, your, your item is all but assured to pass. Have fun.
All right.
And pick the right movie.
We'll see what we can do, thank you.
Any audience communication in regards to Napoleon against Cheaper by the Dozen? Seeing none, we're going to move on to item number four, is a request to dedicate a parking lot in Emerson Oaks Site condominiums. This comes to us from Sauvee for the dedication of parking lot, as required in the warranty deed. Mr. Zalinski, is this you? Or do you just want to give a little background?
I would defer to Ted Davis, actually.
Yeah?
For the...
Fine, Councilman Donovan?
Yeah, thanks, Mr. President. I live in this subdivision, and, long story short, council, a couple of years ago, we approved a site plan for 30 some new build homes, residential homes, over there in Clement Circle neighborhood, Councilman McCullough's old neighborhood, this old block. Beautiful homes, I drive by it a couple of times a day, and actually, the builders over there, there's Sauvee, Bellagio, Infinity, Leo Sauvee Building, they all expanded our city-owned park right there, the Clement Circle Park. It was a really small parking lot, no asphalt, it was pretty rough shape, and they built the neighbor next door, and they built a huge parking lot, and now it's really nice, because none of the cars park on Harrison anymore. You couldn't drive down Harrison, now all of the traffic that hangs out over at Clement Circle Park parks in this really nice, brand-new parking lot. So I'm happy to say they dedicated that over to the city of Livonia.
Sounds good, and you did, did you give a...
I offered an approving on consent, no objection from my colleagues.
Perfect. Counsel, anything further? Audience, seeing none. We have an approving on consent on item number four. We're going to move on to item number five, which is a waiver petition. This comes to us from the Planning Commission in reference to petition 2024-05-02-09, submitted by Needed Relief Massage and Spa, requesting waiver use to operate a massage establishment at 32003 Plymouth Road, located on the south side of Plymouth Road between Merriman and Hubbard Roads. This is Mr. Torina.
Thank you. Massage establishments, as you know, are treated as a waiver use. In a C1 zoning district, Needed Relief would be located, or is located, in a building that's at the southwest corner of Plymouth and Ingram Roads. The, there's a couple special requirements, 400 feet, a foot separation between other massage establishments, as well as 400 feet of separation between any school, place of worship, daycare facility, library, playground, or public park. There are, none of those facilities are within 400 feet, so it complies with those requirements. This building is a multi-tenant building, it's about 6,600 square feet, Needed Relief would occupy 1,200 square feet. Hours of operation would be 10:00 to 8:00 PM Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday, and then from 9:00 to 5:00 on Saturday and Sunday. No changes to the building itself, parking is sufficient, the Planning Commission is recommending approval, with one stipulation, in that the waiver be limited to this proprietor only, and that any change in ownership would have to come back for council. See, thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Councilwoman Toye?
By me, the petitioner, have you operated before massage places, or...
Yes, so Needed Relief of Livonia is our second location, our flagship was in, started in Southgate in 2006.
Okay.
Sir, can I have your name and address?
I'm sorry, so yes, my name is Michael Molecki, I'm the owner of Needed Relief Massage and Spa, the address is 32003 Plymouth Road.
Sorry, Mr. Chair.
Oh, you're fine.
So, tell me again, Southfield, did you say?
Southgate.
Southgate?
Yes.
And one in Livonia?
This is our second location in Livonia, yes.
Okay, where's your first location located? I'm sorry, I'm not familiar with it.
On North Line Road in Southgate?
No, the one in Livonia.
Oh, actually, right down the street from your office as well, so we are right in, on Ingram and Plymouth Road.
The new one, is...
The new one, yes, the new second location.
Yeah, okay, yeah, you are real close to me. So, no violations down there, no nothing, right?
None at all.
Not at all. And how many, how many tables do you have, or chairs, or whatever?
So, in Livonia, we currently have two therapy rooms, we have the opportunity for a third if the demand requires it, but we have five therapists on staff, and two rooms operating five days a week.
Okay, and that's Monday through Friday?
No, actually, Wednesday through Sunday.
Okay, so you find weekends are busier, obviously.
Absolutely, the demand is much, much higher than the weekends when, because a working class of community in, like Livonia, needs the week, needs weekends, times and hours.
And what kind of massage do you do?
So, a variety of massages, from your traditional Swedish massage, long-flowing strokes, but we also can do prenatal therapy, we can do hot rock, we can do sports massages, which is really a, an aggressive type of stretching, we can do couples massages, one of the few places in Livonia that can actually do couples massages, because we have this room for it. We can also do cranial sacral therapy, and we have a specialist who can do cupping as well.
Oh, good, okay, thank you very much, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Councilman Jai?
So, I'm looking at Google Maps, and it, it already shows that this is your location. Have you been operating there?
Yes, so we were made of a need of, made aware of the need for a waiver, in, I believe it was June, and within a week, we had applied to this council for a waiver. We were unaware prior to that, of that need. So, we have been open here in, in Livonia since September of 2023, so approximately six months before we were aware.
And you have not had any violations or anything?
Actually, not. We've been, actually, we've, the, I own the entire building, so I own the three companies that are also in that building, with M&amp;M Home Care, AICM Michigan, and Supportive Home Healthcare. We've had Livonia police come and use our video cams, because of the angles we have, so they've actually asked us for assistance in getting some information about some crimes that have happened in the area.
So, when we consider waiver petitions, my question is always, in terms of the staffing, is it a semi-fixed staffing, or is it a transient staffing? Because when we look at massage parlors and, in situations when there has been problems, there seems to be a transient staff that is, you know, I won't go into too much...
Understanding your concern.
Here, but I mean, there are people who are traveling from out of states to be positioned there for a short period of time, who then move on somewhere else. And when we have had problems, that seems to be the nature of the problem, is that people are brought in to work, or do whatever they're doing there, and then they're off to somewhere else. So, can you tell me your staffing plan? Who works there? What's, what's the kind of regular setup there?
Yeah, it's a very good question, and we try to hopefully address that. We did send to the council a packet, I tried to limit it down to 25 pages, I apologize, the Planning Commission got a 37-page report, but our 25-page report that we tried to send to the council included a variety of things that we do to make sure our staff is not only licensed, they are licensed by the state of Michigan, but professional, the background checks we go through, they are all local staff. They are employees of my company, they are given full benefits, we provide payroll services with taxes taken out, we have a 401K with a match, paid time off. We were doing that before the Michigan Supreme Court came down with their requirement now for the one, one hour of PTO every 30 hours, we've been providing more than that. And you can see from our packet, if you take a look, I believe on page like 24, 25, it's just a redacted copy of our employee's driver's license, driver's license, registration, proof of insurance, these are all things we require of all of our staff. They are all local, Michigan, none are transient. We have had a huge retention rate for all of our staff since I've taken ownership.
I appreciate the answers. I did see that in the packet, but I think it's important, people at home are watching this, they need to know that I'm asking you the same questions as I ask other people, and it's, it's all that much more helpful if you have the answers that hit the nail on the head.
It's a very fair question, people should know that we maintain and employ only the best professionals, that is why we have small commercial for us. We've been named one number one, the best massage therapist by the Detroit Press for the last three years in a row. Our Google reviews, over 900 Google reviews, five, 4.9 stars. It all indicates the, the level of professionalism we bring to this, to this industry, and we bring to Livonia.
Well, thank you, sir, we enjoy having quality businesses here, and we welcome you.
Thank you.
Vice President?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I also looked at the packet extensively, and it does look like you are running a reputable business, but some of the concerns that have been brought to my attention is that you were operating without the proper waivers, and ignorance is not an excuse for that, and then continued to operate without the proper waivers. So I just want to give you a chance to address those concerns that the residents have had that contacted me about this.
You are correct, there is no excuse for ignorance, and I do take full responsibility for that. I run multiple businesses in the city, and this is the first one that's ever required a Livonia, a waiver from the city of Livonia. I've had businesses now in the city of Livonia for well over a decade. We continue to operate because there was demand from the residents of the city of our existing neighborhoods, we're servicing a lot of our residents from Old Rosedale, and we're very grateful for their support. We've had a lot of their fine support from our Facebook and their Facebook groups, so we continue to do that because there was demand. If we were, if we were told by the city that it required we cease operations until this point, we would have done so, but it was never brought to our attention that that was a requirement. We know we operate a wonderfully professional business, we provide outstanding service, and we felt we should, we were compelled to continue to do so. It was not in any way a slight against the city, the ordinances, or the, just against the city or the ordinances that were existing.
Thank you, I appreciate that, too. And I do appreciate you supplying us with all the information, the licenses, the staffing, and all of that, and hopefully we can just right this ship.
Thank you, it's, it's part of our business practices, like as I said, we've been doing business for 10 years. My flagship business, M&amp;M Home Care, has been in this city since its opening in 2014. Needed Relief has taken its, its presence here seriously, we are big supporters of the community, we've tried to be involved in a variety of things, including the upcoming tour to Livonia, we were at last year's tour to Livonia, we will be providing sponsorship again this year as well.
And we appreciate you being a community partner as well. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Of course, thank you. Anything further from council?
Mr. Chair, I think we need a motion, do we not?
We still need a motion.
I'll offer an approving, and welcome to the neighborhood.
Are you fine with consent?
I'm primed, don't worry. No, I'm teasing.
Are you okay with consent, or do you like it on the regular?
It's, colleagues, it's up, you know, I mean, if anybody has a problem...
Do we have an issue if we leave it on consent?
Call for consent.
Let's leave it on consent.
Yep.
I appreciate, I just was looking at your website, too, it's very thorough, and you're, it shows all the licensing, even biographies of everybody. You're running a great program, and again, thanks for your support for the city, and whatever we can do to help you out, just let us know.
Thank you very much, I appreciate your time.
Any audience communication in regards to this petition? Seeing none, we have an approving on consent, and we are going to move on to item number six, which is another waiver petition, comes to us from the Planning Commission in reference to petition 2023-06-02-08, submitted by Meyer, requesting waiver use approval to utilize an SDM liquor license, sale of packaged beer and wine products for consumption off the premises, in connection with the new operation of a new Meyer store at 33500 Seven Mile Road. Mr. Torina?
Thank you. SDM, which stands for specially designated merchant license, allows for the sale of beer and wine products for consumption off the premises. The Meyer store that was approved at the previous regular meeting is requesting an SDM license, there are special requirements that apply, one being that there be at least 500 feet of separation between other SDM licensed businesses. In this case, there are three other SDM licensed businesses within that 500-foot separation distance. One is Primos Pizzeria, located on the south side of Seven Mile Road, the other is the Wine Castle, located at the southwest corner of Seven Mile and Farmington Roads, and then Winter Garden Tavern, which really is an ancillary license attached to that Class C business operation. So, all three of these are within 500 feet of the proposed Meyer store. Planning Commission is recommending approval of the SDM license, subject to council's waiving the separation requirement. Thank you.
Counsel? Let me go to Councilman Morgan, and then I'll go to Councilman Donovan.
Yeah, I would just like to say that, you know, a lot of this was probably caused by council, because we had to make some adjustments and things like that to put that Meyer store in, so I, I think this is, this is a good project, like I had indicated before. I don't believe that those other businesses are going to suffer in any form or fashion. I'm still going to visit those facilities, just as I always have, and I do believe that their businesses are going to flourish because of this project, so I am going to offer an approving on consent with this.
So we have an approving on consent?
It's okay with other council members, if not, put it on the regular.
Thank you, Councilman Morgan, Councilman Donovan?
Thanks, Mr. President. Mr. Torina, can you help me understand, help council understand, there's, we don't institute these requirements, this is by the MLCC. Can you help me understand the, with the spacing requirements? I know there's some things here with separation because of main roads and whatnot, can you kind of dive into that a little bit?
Sure, well, the, the state, the Michigan Liquor Control Commission does have its own separation requirements. The difference here is that our ordinance does not recognize whenever businesses are located across major highways or roads. In the case of the state, the separation requirements are waived where the businesses are located on the opposite side of a major road.
So we do have ordinances, but there's the MLCC state laws that kind of supersede, or could supersede our local ordinance?
Yeah, in this case, it will not, they will not be violating any MLCC rules, so...
So, by doing this, there's no state law violations, and I guess I don't want to jump ahead, if it's okay with you, Mr. President, to the petitioner, you guys are not selling liquor, you're only doing beer and wine?
That is correct.
Which would be consistent with other, to Mr. Torina, that would be consistent with other big box stores in our community, because we don't allow other big box stores and grocers not to sell liquor?
That is correct.
Yeah, okay, I mean, I'm okay with, I'm in favor of it. I think that if we were to, to place a restriction on you to not give you the, the license, I think that'd be kind of unfair. I don't know how we justify as a community, all these other big box retailers get it, and then you don't get it, right? I just, I don't understand how we as a community can justify that legally. It's kind of like specific targeting, if you ask me. I just don't understand how we get away with doing that. I think that other big box stores, if you had liquor, I would not be supportive of it, but you guys are abiding by that ordinance, and I'm good with it. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman Donovan. Anything further from council? Councilwoman Bazinski?
And I'd just like to add, too, that I think consumers are really going to go to Meyer expecting to see these goods, so I think it's not just for the benefit of the business, but it's also what people who are shopping are going to expect to find if they don't see it there. It's going to, again, be inconsistent with what you normally do, if you're planning a grocery list, and you need some white wine for a sauce, I mean, you should be able to, to purchase that at a Meyer grocery store, I think that's reasonable, so...
Anything else from council? Seeing none, anything from the audience? Seeing none, you have an approving on consent.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
We'll miss you. Spent so much time together.
Dude, we're coming, we're coming out to Grand Rapids to say hi.
I believe you said that with a straight face.
I think you did, too. It's been a year and a half of relationships.
Yes. All right, we'll move on to item number seven, and is an award of bid, comes to us from Livonia Housing Commission for the replacement of 54 30-gallon hot water heaters at Silver Village from budgeted funds. Good evening.
Good evening, how are you?
Good, how are you, Mr. President?
Good, thank you. On June 3rd, the city council approved a bid to Good Neighbor Heating and Cooling to replace 54 hot water heaters at the Silver Village housing community. We've been able to work within our budget to find an additional dollars to reallocate, so this will not be a new appropriation of Silver Village funds. The contractors agreed to extend the contract under the same terms and conditions, same prices, so we would like to proceed to award a contract to Good Neighbor Heating and Cooling for the balance of the project, so we'll complete all the hot water heaters at Silver Village this fiscal year. The amount of that contract is $65,718.
Mr. President?
Councilwoman Toye?
I would like to make sure they have hot water, so I'm going to offer an approval.
Consent or regular?
I, I'll say consent.
Is that okay with my colleagues? All right, anything else from council? Anything from the audience? You know you couldn't resist. I didn't even see you for a minute.
Steve King, 33950 Coventry. All right, a couple of things. I think folks that read and stay up on things recognize that the world, the world, is moving away from combustion. And so what does that mean? That means the flame that heats our water, cooks our food, heats our homes, fires the internal combustion engine. It's going away. And China's got a 10-year head start. And proposals come to you guys all the time, and it's just run-of-the-mill, regular stuff. We're putting in hot water heaters that were designed in the 19th century. You have opportunities before you constantly. You guys spend millions of dollars doing the same thing we've always done. The federal government is twisting your arms and all municipality arms. They just released $4.3 billion for this exact thing. There's a builder, one of the largest builders of residential homes, who is now doing all heat pump hot water heaters. Why? 70% savings on energy. Right now, you could do tankless hot water heaters. You could do heat pump water. I mean, it's just, it's frustrating to me to watch Livonia just lag behind other cities. The city of Dearborn will have 16 electric buses delivering kids this school year. And we've just got around to propane. That was 10 years ago. So when Jim comes before you and he does this, I'm not, you know, he's doing what he's done and, you know, it's just, we're doing what we've always done. And I just think Livonia could do better. And it's, I'm just wondering, when will it happen in my lifetime? Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. King.
Mr. President?
Councilman Drali?
So Jim, were any of these alternative methods considered, specked out from a cost perspective or anything like that?
Yes, they were. So.
Can you just give us a recitation in regards to how we landed on this recommendation?
Yeah, tankless hot water heaters are good. It's called hot water on demand. It's basically good for larger families. All of these apartments are single persons living there. So the reason they went to hot water on demand is because when you have a family of four or a family of five, they're getting up in the morning, they're going off to school, getting ready, they need hot water on demand. They don't want to have a 30-gallon or a 40-gallon hot water tank expire. So A, it's not really appropriate for a single-use apartment. Number two, Silver Village was built in 1976. The gas piping is not the proper size. The electricity is not the proper size because you've got to upgrade the electrical to service the hot water tank. So when you add those costs onto the cost of the hot water tank or the hot water on demand feature, it drives the cost greater than what we are currently proposing. So for those three reasons, we decided to go with the conventional.
Thank you, Jim. I very much appreciate the answer and I understand the rationale and the consideration. And you are the expert in regards to this. Mr. King, no, Mr. King, he brings up.
Can I rebut that, please?
No, 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 no. Mr. King brings up valid points. And I think the city is going to be moving in the direction to implement a lot of these technologies as we look to build new buildings and as we look to be more efficient in our operations. And I mean, I think that's been the central focus point of talking about replacing this building as a city hall, is the sheer cost to heat and cool the thing justifies building another building altogether because it is so inefficient. So hopefully the city does move in the direction, but I think with the explanation that we've been provided, I think it's appropriate to move forward at this time.
Thank you, Councilman Drali. Councilman Donovan?
Thanks, Mr. President. Thanks, Ms. Engels, for being here this evening. I guess I'm old-fashioned. I like the hot water tanks. They provide sufficient hot water to residents. 30 gallons, like you said, these are single apartments, one senior, maybe two seniors. Mostly, mostly these units are one-run resident. They don't need 50-gallon, 60-gallon hot water tank. And I can understand the argument for new construction, maybe for tankless hot water tanks. But again, these buildings are built a long time ago to upgrade the electrical service panel to a building of this size for, was it 106 units maybe? Or I can't remember how many units exactly.
108.
108. I mean, I can only imagine the price. I just got a price tag from an electrician for one hot water tank. I can only imagine what it would cost for 108 hot water tanks. I just think we would be throwing too much money out the window to accomplish that. Now, if you're building a new building, which you are, and if you wanted to talk about maybe doing some sort of new, energy-efficient technology, that's a discussion that the government can have. But to do it, to retrofit a building like this, unless you're a private developer, I don't think it'd be a wise decision to make with dollars because this is the only thing you have to fix in these buildings. You have to try to stretch out a fixed amount of money to address multiple things on aging buildings. You can't just spend all your money on one thing because you're so passionate about it. I understand being passionate about it, but when you're up here, you can't just do what you want to do. You have to think about tax dollars and how to efficiently use those tax dollars and stretch them on multiple projects every single year. So I think this is a wise decision and I'll be supportive of it. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Councilman Donovan. Anything further from the, from council? Seeing none. Anything further from the audience? Seeing none. We do have still an approving on consent. And yeah, matters all but a sure to approve. Appreciate it.
Good evening.
Moving on to item number eight is a request for authorization to purchase two heavy-duty 18-foot continental cargo trailers through the State of Michigan bid process. This comes to us from the Department of Public Works to be used by the Public Works Division from budgeted funds. Mr. Moore, how are you?
Good, council. Evening, Doug Moore, Department of Public Works. The first item I have tonight, council, is two 18-foot covered trailers. We bid them out on mitten on June 11th. The bids were opened on July 16th. The low bidder meeting specs was Truck and Trailer Specialties out of Howell for $32,464. The trailers are going to be used by our road maintenance section. One will be used by our construction crew. The other one's going to be used for our sign shop. We currently have three like units. One is used by park maintenance to haul the sound system for the assorted events that we have. One is used by the construction crew for part of their road construction projects. And the third one is used by the water section for the trench box that we have. So we are asking council to approve the purchase from Truck and Trailer Specialties in the amount of $32,464.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Counsel? Good direction? Councilman Morgan?
I'll offer an approving on consent.
We've been approving on consent. Is there anything further from council? Seeing none. Anything from the audience? Seeing none. We'll move on to, number nine is always my favorite. It's a request to authorize purchase of 60 cases of, is it Natular?
Yes.
XRT tablets. Budgeted, this comes to us from the Department of Public Works for the 2024 mosquito treatment program.
This would be actually the 2025. We've already done the 2024. Clark Mosquito is the manufacturer, so we don't even bother bidding it out. If we did, we'd be paying more from a supplier. This will be enough to treat 12,000 catch basins, and we have about 11,300, so it gives us a little bit of stock. When they get cleaned next summer, we'll throw a briquet back in. They'll last about 180 days, and they're about that long, about that big around. And the amount is $62,092.80, and it's from budgeted funds.
Mr. Chair?
I got Vice President, and then I'll go to Councilman Toy and Councilman Morgan.
I was, you know, whatever you can do to keep mosquitoes away from me, I'm all for, so I would offer an approval on consent.
We have an approving on consent. Council, do you have any more questions?
No, I concur.
Anything from the audience? Seeing none. We're going to move on to item number 10.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Have a good evening. Thanks for hanging out. All right, item number 10 is a request to accept a stormwater facilities maintenance agreement. Comes to us from the Engineering Division from EROP LLC in conjunction with the construction of a storm drain system that provides adequate drainage for the newly constructed Whitewater Express Car Wash located at 30471 Plymouth Road. Mr. Zelensky?
Good evening, council president and city council members. I'll be handling this item. The next two items will be handled by Dave Lear, the Assistant City Engineer. Then I'll finish off 13 and 14. But for this location, it's the old arches that was torn down, and then got the new car wash that was recently constructed along Plymouth Road there. So again, just the housekeeping issue for accepting the stormwater agreement. It'll be, you know, accepted and then recorded at Wayne County, so looking for your approval.
Thank you. Councilman Morgan?
I'll offer an approving on consent.
All right, we have an approving on consent.
We need a car wash that serves chicken.
Well, we probably, that's probably coming. It's Shaquille O'Neal's new restaurant.
Big Shaq is coming to town.
They've got storage units too.
Laura, do you have anything for communication on that item? I'm just going to go, I'm tailoring it right now. All right, number 11 is an award of contract comes to us from the Engineering Division for the insulation and commission of the new air-cooled chiller at the Robert and Janet Bennett Civic Center Library from budgeted funds. Mr. Lear?
Yes, thank you. Earlier this year, the city purchased a air-cooled chiller for the library to replace the ones that have gone bad. We've been renting the portable one outside, and the rental on that ends at the end of the summer. So we've planned for contractors to come in and do the final replacement once the temporary one leaves. The chiller that we've ordered actually isn't supposed to be here till the end of November, but we want to get the site work done and have everything prepped for when it eventually shows up. We went out for bids, and the lowest qualified bidder was Engineered Comfort Systems out of Taylor, Michigan. We have checked into their background, very reputable company, used by a lot of similar installations around the area. Schools have used them. So we'd like to get approval for awarding a contracting amount of $433,177.30 to Engineered Comfort Systems.
Mr. President?
Councilwoman Toy?
I would like to offer an approving on consent.
All right. Councilwoman Bozinski, then I'll go to Vice President.
I was just curious, with the temporary chiller that's outside, you said the end of the summer is at like the official end of summer date. Obviously, it's 90 degrees right now. So, you know, I think we still need chilling services. Are we having to do an extension on the?
No, it'll basically stay until probably the end of September, at which time you're not likely to run into the higher temperatures that we're experiencing right now. So we should be safe to pull that away and then start the site work on the new one.
I do have one question. No, Vice President, you go first.
Thank you. I just really had one quick question, and I just wanted to make it clear that this $433,000 is just for the installation because we already purchased the one that's coming.
Correct.
I just myself balked and had a little bit of sticker shock when I saw that. But I just, obviously, there's a lot to it.
Yeah, it does also include demolition of the old water cooler and piping and everything throughout the existing library structure. The new pad for everything outside, piping into the building and replacing all the internal and hookup.
So this is a, this is a much bigger project than it just sounds like on paper, obviously.
Yeah, it's not just pulling one out and plugging the next one in.
And that's what I just wanted to kind of convey.
Yeah, they're going to be pulling everything off the roof and all kinds of things going on with getting rid of the old system.
Great, thank you.
Councilman Morgan?
Yeah. Mr. Lear, are they having a crane coming in to lift this over the building? Or is, how's that working this time? I mean, I remember when they put something on the top of this building, it was a.
They'll have a crane here to offload it onto a pad that's going to be set on the side of the building. Down the slope from where the temporary one is at right now, there's a low area on the east side of the building. There will be a permanent pad placed on the ground, so it'll be a ground-mounted instead of a roof-mounted.
Okay, and this is all-inclusive in this price? They're doing all of that for?
Yes, that's the crane rental for them to set it to also pull the existing off the roof as well.
Okay.
With the crane.
All right, thank you.
Councilman Donovan?
Thank you, Mr. President, and thanks, Mr. Lear, for being here. You always are one of the best dressed people in town. Yeah, to Vice President's point, we've spent so much money, I've lost track. I think this has been ongoing for maybe two years. Don't quote me on that, a year and a half, give or take. I mean, I think we've got to be at least like a million and a half dollars now, close to it. Again, don't quote me on the number, but it's something like that. And I just think it kind of puts us in perspective how expensive it is to maintain these aging buildings. And we have to be very intentional about the money we spend in them. And again, this is just one air conditioning unit for a large building. Imagine what it'd take to fix some other buildings in this community. So it's nice to see we're almost at the finish line. And again, I think we've been dealing with this for a year and a half, two years, I think, something to that effect. So good work to the Engineering Department and the Library Department and everyone that's been involved. Thanks. Thank you, Mr. President.
Councilman, Councilwoman Bozinski?
Yeah, I just wanted to jump in on what my colleague had mentioned. Prior to being on council, I was the board chair of the Library Commission. So we have dealt with this issue extensively as a commission. And I think, you know, a large chunk, if I'm not mistaken, about a quarter million dollars is being spent on the trailer exclusively outside. The library has three like octopus-like chillers in the building. And for literally over a decade, two, one of them was down. The second one, we were using eBay to repair, you know, to say, oh, this piece needs to be repaired. Our employees would go on eBay, find those parts. We reached the point where we couldn't find those parts on eBay anymore, and we're down to one chiller. And then you can't have no chiller. So we needed to invest in this emergency system that's a quarter of a million dollars. We knew for at least a decade, and I believe longer. I mean, the reality is, we've all know that these octopus systems have been replaced elsewhere. So, you know, it's not simply a maintaining building question. It's taking care of the buildings that we have and preparing for the inevitable. You know, we knew that this would need to be repaired. We're spending, you know, a quarter of a million dollars more that could be spent on library services, you know, other buildings that were previously part of the library system, a lot of things. If we had been more mindful and thought about it as these problems came up, as we were aware that they were on the table, with just big picture, why it's so important to me when we talk about investing in new buildings, that we have a plan in place to make sure that they're well cared for.
Thank you. Any further questions or comments from council?
If I, if I may, Mr. Lear, is it possible, I don't, do we have a motion?
Yep.
We do have a motion.
Yes.
Is it okay if we put it on regular?
Sure.
The only reason I ask it, Mr. Lear, can you, is there a possibility to get the bid specs? The only thing, so I'm looking at everything. Everything seems in line, but you know, I was looking over some of the notes. The chiller itself was 100, am I right, 154,000. And I understand that, listen, I'm part of the game, I get it. There's two things that I would like to see, if possible. Obviously, I want to see the design for the remove-and-replace plumbing. Is that building-wide? I mean, is that all hot water and, is that the, all the lines for the chiller throughout the building?
Everything associated with the existing water system.
Okay, so throughout the whole building?
Yes, all, from roof top down.
I'm happy because I see that number, and the number's large, and that's good because that means we're replacing the system. A lot of times, and I'm sure, you know, I don't want to speak for our current facilities, but I don't, when's the last time a water treatment has been done on those pipes? And so basically, to educate anybody that's out there, they corrode from the inside like galvanized pipe. And you don't know until it's a bad day when they break. So I'm happy that this is going to be something, because obviously it's a building we're going to want to keep for many years, that is replacing a lot of copper, I would imagine, throughout the entire facility that is desperately needed. The one thing, and unless you tell me, you've got a good one, the alternative bid for a deduction of 1,200, do you guys really want that? Or just package it and get rid of it?
No.
Are you okay if we just get rid of it?
We were basically looking at seeing if there was some sort of resale value for the existing or scrap. And yeah, that's why we're not.
1,200 bucks might be more of your headache. I'll leave it up to you, but I would feel better to just say, get that thing out of there. The reason I say that is, we have pent houses, is what we call them, with air handlers on the third floor, and always the old stuff sits up there, and it never leaves.
Yeah.
But I mean, I don't care. I just, what I look at is someone drops it down, and it sits there. And someone gets a call, like, man, what is happening? So you make the call on it, but I would just make the recommendation, just get it rid of it.
That is, the purchasing department is looking at actively trying to get that set up for when the new one shows up. Someone would put it on a truck and someone takes it away that day.
Okay. As long as you're good with it. I just wanted to bring it up. Again, if you could send me the stuff just so I could see, and then it helps me help you guys to explain it. Anything from the audience on the chiller? Seeing none. We have an approving on regular. And we are going to now move on to item number 12, which is an award of contract from the Engineering Division for the pavement repairs at the Livonia Police Headquarters from budgeted funds. Mr. Lear, take it away.
Okay, this item comes to us from a couple of different sources. First of all, the police department contacted us to try and replace some of the existing rusted-out grates and storm sewer rims along their back parking areas and down to their vehicle service areas. At the same time, Wayne County did an audit and found out that we have a catch basin inside the vehicle garage that is connected to the storm sewer, which is bad because they also noticed that there might be vehicle work being done and a chance of.
No oil-water separator?
Oil-water separator, so. So we've been working at getting a contractor to relocate that, yeah, to a sanitary sewer. So this kind of takes in all of the concrete replacement fixes as well as relocating that storm sewer to a sanitary. We got quotes from three businesses that we know do this type of work, are, we're comfortable with. The results came back, and rotundo construction was the lowest at 28, 628. And we'd like approval, or yes, approval to go ahead with the contract for them to finish this work also while they're in town doing one of our other programs.
Sounds good. Councilman Morgan?
Yes, that sounds good. It's a reputable company. Done work with them for a very long time, the city has. And I heard this was an issue, so I'd like to offer an approving on consent.
Anything else from council? Vice President?
I just have a question. How imminent is the need for these repairs? Because I know we're looking at, you know, moving police headquarters, relook, you know, is this something that needs to be done right now to get us through the next couple of years? Or is this just something that's a wishlist item?
Well.
Because I don't want to pour a lot of money into PD Headquarters if we're going to move it.
Yeah, the bulk of it that's driving it is the requirement from the county to relocate the storm, so that's probably half of the money right there. The other big driving factor is there's a trench drain that is at the bottom of the ramp that has basically failed. It's rusted out so bad that they've just got a steel plate going across it right now, so they can drive their heavier equipment down and get in there. So we do need to replace the entire trench drain to keep that functioning and get them to basically have access to the bays at the bottom of the, and then there is a sanitary or a storm manhole in the upper, I guess it's called Sally Port, where they transfer, that whole thing is rusted out and ready to fall in as well.
Okay, so this is a pretty imminent need then?
It needs to be done before now. And we're kind of catching it all at one time, since we're going to be there for the main part for the storm getting relocated.
Perfect, thank you, Mr. Lear.
Anything further from council?
Seeing none, and I just want to be on record, I think Mr. Zelensick was on the project manager on the, when he tied it into that storm sewer. I got him laughing. Anything else from the audience? Seeing none? We're going to move on to item number thirteen, which is a request to approve the establishment of improvement bonds. Comes to us from the Engineering Division to assure the installation of public improvements to Parkdale Site condominium. Mr. Zelensick?
Yes. Again, this is also known as Backy Estates, again, a corner of Levan and Parkdale. Again, we're just following the ordinance, section eighteen-point-six-six of ordinance number five forty-three, to provide cash bonds for developments which are refundable, and then the ones that are not refundable for trees, street lighting, things of that nature. So just looking for your approval on this portion, and again, once that's approved, the developer will come in and pay those bonds, and we'll start construction thereafter.
Thank you, council?
Move to approval.
What do you got, Mr. Morgan?
I just had a quick question. Mr. Zelensick, these bonds, you know, I've talked to many developers over time, and after the site project is completed, about how long does it take for the city to return their money on the bond? I mean, after everything is done, and the approvals, the CFOs have been done, they've completed everything they are supposed to. Does the city have a timeline that they need to return the bonds to these builders?
No, typically, if they have a portion where they put the water in the sewer and road in, then the general improvement bond, I'd release it. They come back, they want to do the monuments and markers, we come back to City Council. Sometimes it's three times, sometimes it's four. Hared squares you just approved, I think after four years, got the as-built drawings, so all depends, whenever the developer's completed, checklist is done, then we'll release it. But it's on the timeframe of the developer when they're completing the acceptance. So I don't come back for all these at once. I come back, elocart, if they're done in the one section, I'm happy to refund the money on the bond. So it just depends on how the developer completes this project over time, request it, we approve it, and then we come back to you guys for the official approval.
So it doesn't have anything to do with the CFO? Once the city gives a CFO to move into the home, that's not approval that everything has been done up to the satisfaction of the city?
Yeah, correct. It's usually sanitary water and sewer, right? And that's the first part of the general improvement bonds, and the road, accepting the road. So other than that, as-built drawings is another one. Sidewalks, again, it takes, may take three years. For instance, Emerson Oaks, over three years. Grand Reserve, over three years. These things take three years. Some I can release, you know, once it's accepted, in a year and a half from now, some may be two years, as-built could be three years, all depends on the developer's timeframe, so.
Okay, all right, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
All right, so we've been approving on consent. Any questions from the audience on the bonds? Seeing none? We're going to move on to item number fourteen, which is a request to approve the establishment of improvement bonds. This comes to us from the Engineering Division to assure the installation of public improvements to the Trevi Court condominium located on the south side of Plymouth Road. Mr. Zelensick?
Same thing, just condo development. It's got a private road there on the south side of Plymouth Road, looking for improvement bonds to be set forth, and then the developer, again, will proceed forward with the development, and at the appropriate times, will come back to City Council for any, all items for release on the refundable bond portion, and then the other portion, they paid for trees, street lighting, or things of that nature, will then be used for that at the appropriate time. Thank you.
Council?
Yeah, I'll offer an approving on consent.
We've been approving on consent. Anything further from council? Anything from the audience? I'm checking you out. With that, I'll go back to the audience, and Mr. King, take us home.
Yeah, okay. All right, you know, I couldn't let that comment lie. Rob says he's old-school, old-school, old fool. Okay, a couple of things, a couple of things. All right, this tankless hot water here, why do I push it? Because it's ninety percent energy-saving. It's money, it saves the city money, okay? And it starts a culture of saving money on everything that comes before, council.